Everyone, and just a reminder that the meetings are being videotaped. Therefore, when you speak, make sure that you speak into the microphone so make sure that everyone can be heard. Also, just want to remind everybody, if this is your first time at the council meeting, that in case of a fire, we would ask you to please orderly leave this chamber and then go outside and reconvene in front of the St. Clair County sign. That way, we could take a head count to see who's there and who is not. In case of a severe weather, then we'd ask you to please exit out the council chambers, go to your right, and then follow the hallway down in front of the clerk's office. Then you would go down the steps into the shelter area before, below. So, we hope that it's not necessary, but just in case that it is, you have those directions. Okay, roll call of aldermen.
Alderman Hazel.
Here.
Alderman Kinsella.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Bittner.
Here.
Alderman Tyler.
Here.
Alderman Randall.
Here.
Alderman Ovian.
Here.
Alderman Anthony.
Here.
Mayor pro Tim Sillsby.
Here.
Alderman Dillman.
Here.
Alderman Cybert.
Here.
Alderman White.
Here.
Alderman Galetti. Alderman Elmore.
Here.
Alderman Wiggington.
Here.
Alderman Musgrove.
Here.
Alderman Galetti is excused for this evening. Roll call of department heads.
City Attorney Flynn.
Here.
City Treasurer Hart.
Here.
Police Chief Clay. Fire Chief Poor.
Here.
Ken Vaughn.
Here.
Royce Carlisle.
Here.
Jamie Maitre.
Here.
Tim Gregowitz.
Here.
Jim Schneider.
Here.
Leander Spearmun.
Here.
Chuck Schaefer.
Bob Sabo.
Here.
Debbie Belleville.
Here.
Niss McCaskill.
Those that are missing, I'm sure, are excused at this point. Ask everyone to please stand for the joint motion of the regional council.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's no public hearing this evening. We'll now move into public participation. We encourage you to please keep your comments to two to three minutes. Please, when you step to the microphone, please state your name and your address. And also, we're asking if you please keep your comments based on the agenda or city business. All right, I will open the first one. Mike?
Michael Hagberg, 701 Centerville Avenue. On tonight's agenda, there's an item that's dealing with the North Illinois streetscape, and it states that it's a $3 million project. But I think, in fairness to the taxpayers, it should be a little bit researched by the BND, or possibly to let the aldermen know how much money we've already spent on design and property acquisition, demo, and easements that's not being part of that $3 million project, to get a good feel for exactly how much it's going to cost, even estimate it up front, today's money, let alone something that happened on the previous streetscape, which went terribly over budget and cost the taxpayers a lot more than they initially agreed to pay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My name is Mike Lotharren. I live at 421 Springdale in Belleville. And I'm here representing the Oktoberfest. On item 12A of your communications, the Oktoberfest committee is requesting that the Oktoberfest be extended down to Jackson Street instead of stopping at High Street as previously done. We hope to have a second stage at Jackson and Main that will provide for local talent, the both high school German clubs, plus some German music, plus other dancers and what have you that we have no room for, or timeframe for, on the main stage. I would hope that you would support this so that we could keep the Oktoberfest large like it was last year, and everybody would be happy. Thank you.
Any other comments? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Andrea Powell. I'm at 128 East Main Street, downtown Belleville. And I'm also commenting about the Oktoberfest. I would hope that you guys would take businesses into consideration that will be open during these hours, understanding that you need to expand. We, I'm personally wondering why it can't be expanded to North and South 159 to leave room for parking and our business during the day. Previously, the, last year, it was for the Belleville 200, and we understood that was kind of a one-time thing, that the expansion went all the way down to Church Street, I believe. I know that it was previously approved to go to High Street, but that was kind of without our knowledge. So, that's, that's my, that's my request, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is Frank Wagner. I stay at 35 Jurion Drive, Belleville, Illinois. I'm here to represent the Circle of Remembrance. And I had a request for the timing from two, two hours on a Sunday, and got ahold of some of the businesses around that thin area, and they said we would not know, I would not be in conflict with their businesses, not. So, that's why I'm here representing that.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Beth Wambel, from Benz, downtown Belleville, 112 East Main. And I would just like to ask that the city council consider the businesses when they ask to close streets, not just this event, but every event. It really hurts business when the streets are closed, there's no parking. I would like to encourage them to use the city parks, or, you know, some other event besides downtown. Every time the streets are closed for an event, a run, a walk, anything, it really hurts the business. So, I would hope that we could try to keep not only this event, but other events from closing down Main Street. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
John Conkright with Benz also. Will not repeat what my daughter just said, but I'm 100% agreement with it. Anytime we have an event downtown and to close all the streets, it hurts. One thing, we're talking about not just event, all events in the future. First of all, I don't think, when we come down here to do this, I know in the past, I have been criticized in the News-Democrat, saying I was greedy, and saying that customers, they're not going to shop my store anymore. Anytime we have to come and defend ourselves on what we want to do, then we get repercussions from the people that are trying to organize the event. I can personally tell you, as long as I'm involved, we will not be back here and ask for this. We want to go on record for permanent. Anytime we close a street off, it hurts our business. Furthermore, we would like for you to look at the fact that when they close things off, quite often, they do it early, and they take the signs down late. For example, last one was the Art on the Square. High Street was blocked off Thursday morning. Now, they don't start doing anything till Friday. Thursday morning says, no parking all day. Sunday, why would Main Street still have the barricades up? You know, they clearly, they closed them off Saturday night after the stores closed, which is fine, but why leave them up? Every single event has a complication. Nine times out of 10, there will be complications. The parking lots will be filled with the workers, on and on and on. Can't, I don't want to elaborate on that, but another thing I want to say is, when you look at the voting standards, who votes? I think you have to consider, take in consideration, although many people don't want to admit it, I think we are the anchor from downtown. If you go to the mall, they have four anchors. When, at the mall, if those four stores are outvoted by 200 stores, who gets their way? I think our vote should count more than one because of what we do and what we are. Last year, my fiscal year ended May 31st. I can show you on paper, we spent over $107,000 just in advertising, promoting downtown and promoting our store. I guarantee you, the other stores that are against us and vote against this, the total of all the retail stores, the bars and the lawyers downtown, don't spend that much money in a year's time. That does not include the money we spent on social advertising. I think our vote should be taken into consideration more than one, which doesn't happen in any of the meetings. All the meetings we go to were one vote. That's the way, that's the way it works, and I think you folks should take that in consideration. Once again, we're here to talk about all future events, as far as, I don't care what they are. Extending the streets for closure, extending the times for closure, whether it's for setting up, taking down, or whatever it is, we're against it because it hurts business, and I guarantee you, it's not easy out there. We need every dollar we can get, and this hurts us. And I'm not talking about just this event, I'm talking about all events. We will not be back.
Sir, sir, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate what you say and, and why you're saying that's, that's really important. But my one question that I would want to pose, that I would be curious about, if we didn't promote downtown?
No.
Okay, or do you know where we're going with this?
I want to clear, I'll make it, maybe I didn't make myself clear. What I meant to say, and what I think I said was, I don't think we should ever give, the fence that we have, I don't think we should give additional park, additional streets blocked for additional, any, anyone that's got going, and as far as I'm concerned, new events, when it's got to close all the streets, I'm against it. What we got going, yeah, we support it, sure, we support it. But does it hurt? Yeah. Have I, you know, I suggested we had one time, we changed the date, and I got crucified. And I will be crucified on this, too. They said, I can see it coming already.
Yeah, I was just wondering if, if in the long run, it's a positive thing?
No.
To get the promotion for the downtown businesses by having people downtown who wouldn't normally be there.
To answer the question, once again, like, let's take Chili Cookoff, for example. I'm not saying a thing about abolishing or cutting back on the space. I'm saying I don't think they should give additional space. Any event we got going, I don't think we want to give additional space. If others wants their grandfathered in, great, I'm not going to, we have to be civic-minded also. But the fact is, these, when the streets are blocked off and the lots are full from these events, it hurts our business. My, our business, we depend on traffic. And if we don't get traffic, we don't get business. And when the, when the people are coming down there to doing these party events, for the most part, they're not shopping. But do we have to be civic-minded and support what we're doing? Yes. But do we have to enlarge on it? As far as I'm concerned, no.
All right. I was just curious, as far as the cost-benefit analysis for a long-term situation with having people down there where you may be hurt for one or two days if it doesn't help business over time by having people there.
You know, on the sidewalks, just to give an example, you know, I didn't, I haven't complained about Art on the Square, other than the fact that they closed the streets off too soon. Why would we have to close them off at 9:00 a.m. on Thursday when they don't start setting up? It's ridiculous. Why would we have to keep Main Street closed off on Sunday? Ridiculous. It hurts business.
Okay.
I can tell you for a fact, I can prove it to you, this last year, we had a 16.2 loss. I figured four days, because when they start closing streets down the day before, Thursday, that's considered a day hurting business. My four days, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, we're down 16.2. That hurts.
Yeah, but it just makes me wonder about your gains through the rest of the year by having an increase in traffic.
You know, there's, there's absolutely no question that when people come down and see and walk through there, some of those people will come back at a later date, and that's something you can, no way of measuring. But one way we can measure is what it does to business on the days when they have them.
Right.
We can give you exact figures, and it hurts.
Being a citizen myself, I kind of appreciate the viability and the vibrance of downtown, and having those festivals, not talking as a city council member, but as, as a resident here, I feel those things draw me downtown more, much more often, and not just on those days, but on other days also.
Well, you know, let me give you another example.
No, I don't, I'm not.
They do draw, they do draw traffic.
Excuse me, excuse me, we need to bring this to a close, I mean, we've got more time.
Well, he asked me the question, I was ready to sit down.
I understand, but I'm just saying, we need to.
Can I give you one more quick example, I'll sit down? When we have a run, and the run completely, sorry, excuse me, completely circles downtown, so that at some point in time, every street has got to be blocked off. And, and it's in the paper, the day before, there are going to be street closures till at least mid-morning, you think, and people, so they, they don't come until noon, they think you're not, you're going to have to, the traffic problem. Any other questions?
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, I'll close public participation. Next item, under Presentation, Recognition, and Appointments, as the mayor does every, the beginning of every month, he recognizes the character word, which is fairness, means playing by the rules, being open-minded, and not taking advantage. So, we encourage all of us that these are more than just words, they're actions that we need to live in our everyday life, so encourage everyone to be a part of that. Next, the approval of minutes. You received your minutes from the special council meeting.
I move the minutes to be approved, just presented.
You have a motion by Alderman Kinsella, second by.
I'd like to make a second with a correction.
Okay, let's get the second first, okay.
Second.
Okay.
I'm trying to find it on my thing, but where it says, I talked to Dallas about this before the meeting, where it says, "I spoke before we took the vote on the Shrine Tiff," the end of what I said was not included, about finding it in their heart to do what's right for the future of Belleville, and I'd like to have that added. And he said they would.
That'd be fun.
Sir, I have a correction, too. On, under discussion, on my comments, it says, "I feared it would metabolize." Metabolize? I said cannibalize.
Gotcha.
I'll accept that.
Accept those. Okay, any other additions or corrections? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Claims, payrolls, and dispersments. It's your pleasure.
I move we accept and file the claims, payrolls, and dispersments as given to us.
The second? Alderman Bittner, any discussions? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Tyler.
Epstein.
Randall.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galet, I'm sorry, Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have oral reports from the standing committees. The first one is motions from the Fire and Police Commission. Do you have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Richard Wangland from captain to battalion chief effective one hour, June 2nd, 2015.
Is there any reason why we couldn't do all these at once?
Can we do them as a group?
Please do.
Okay.
Motion to approve Kurt Logue, if I mess up these names, I'm sorry, from engineer to captain, effective the same date. Motion to approve Michael Minor from firefighter to engineer, same effective date. And motion to approve Raymond Winchester from firefighter to engineer, effective oh 100, oh one hours, June 2nd, 2015.
Is there a motion? Do I have a second?
Second, sir.
Second by Joe Hazel.
That's good.
Okay. Any other comments? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galet, I'm sorry, Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have oral reports from the standing committees. The first one is motions from the Fire and Police Commission. Do you have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Richard Wangland from captain to battalion chief effective one hour, June 2nd, 2015.
Is there any reason why we couldn't do all these at once?
Can we do them as a group?
Please do.
Okay.
Motion to approve Kurt Logue, if I mess up these names, I'm sorry, from engineer to captain, effective the same date. Motion to approve Michael Minor from firefighter to engineer, same effective date. And motion to approve Raymond Winchester from firefighter to engineer, effective oh 100, oh one hours, June 2nd, 2015.
Is there a motion? Do I have a second?
Second, sir.
Second by Joe Hazel.
That's good.
Okay. Any other comments? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Dillman.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galet, I'm sorry, Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item?
Can we please have the promoters stand and be recognized?
Sure. If they are with us this evening, would you be standing? Congratulations. Next, under motions from the administration, we need a motion to deny solicitors' license requests from ARM Security.
So moved, your honor.
Motion by Alderman Randall, second by Alderman Kinsella. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Next will be communications.
12A, 5K Run Walk to honor Dr. Neil Shaw, founder of St. Elizabeth's Hospital Cardiac Cath Lab. Communication from the Dr. Neil Shaw Memorial requesting to hold a 5K Run Walk on September 19th, 2015, starting at 8:00 a.m. Also requesting barricades and no parking signs.
Do I have a motion? Motion? Do you want them all?
Except for the one about the Oktoberfest, can we do that one separately?
Does that agree about everyone?
Yeah.
Okay.
12B, Midtown Merchants. Communication from Midtown Merchants requesting permission for the merchants to hold a sidewalk sale on Friday, June 5th through Sunday, June 7th, 2015, during daylight hours. 12C, Belleville Main Street. Communication from Belleville Main Street requesting to expand hours of brewing queue include Friday, June 5th, 2015. The craft beer walk would be moved to Friday, June 5th, 2015, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. And will only include the area of East Main Street, from the square to Charles Street. They are also requesting permission for a sidewalk sale on Main Street during the hours of the brewing queue on Saturday, June 6th, from 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. 12D, Tour de Belleville. Requesting the Belleville Park and Rec Department requesting to hold the annual bike ride on Friday, July 1st, 2015, starting at 8:30 a.m. at Union United Methodist Church, throughout a designated route throughout the city. Also requesting barricades and police coverage and street closures.
Could we stop just a moment on that? That should be July 10th, and it should be 8:30 p.m. Sorry, thanks, Dallas.
Yeah, that would make sense, wouldn't it? That'd bring us to Oktoberfest. So, if you'd like for me to continue on?
Yes.
12F, the Circle of Remembrance. Communication from Minister Frank Wagner requesting use of the small community park on the corner of East Main and North Church. The theme for this community outreach will be the Circle of Remembrance. This event is free to the public. The dates would be June 14th, 2015, June 28th, 2015, and July 19th, 2015. Also, July 26th, 2015, August 16th, 2015, and August 23rd, 2015. The time for each of these dates will be from 2:00 p.m. until 4:00 p.m. The community outreach will be a musical with 15 to 20 people, and remain open for anyone from the public to stop by and enjoy the performance at no charge. 12G, no parking out on Ovin Street. Communication from Jason Bus, owner of Kyle's Antiques and downtown Belleville and owner of Kyle's Estate Sales, is hosting an estate sale at 2:15 Ovin Street on Friday and Saturday, June 12th and 13th, from 9:00 to 3:00. In the past, he has hosted sales on the street and is too tight to have parking on both sides of the street. Mr. Bus is requesting the city to post no parking signs on the opposite side, east side of the street, from 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. for Friday and Saturday, June 12th and 13th. He needs the street open for loading of items from the home. Okay. 12H, Belleville East High School, 7th Annual Lancer Rule for Cherry 5K Run Walk, 11:00 7:15. Communication from Belleville East High School requesting to hold their 7th Annual Lancer Run. They're requesting assistance from the police department to control the flow of traffic at the intersections of Orchard Drive and Route 161, and at Orchard Drive and West Boulevard from 8:45 until roughly 9:45 a.m.
We have a motion by Alderman Cybert, second by Alderman Schmidt, to approve the communications as read. Yes, sir.
Question, please. Is the first item you mentioned, the Dr. Shaw, St. Elizabeth's Run, is this the first time for this event? Second?
Second.
Obviously, the police department's already reviewed this route.
Yes, I believe they all do.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Welcome. Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
12V, Oktoberfest. Communication from Belleville Oktoberfest requesting extending the festival an additional block, High Street to Jackson Street. Their plan is to place a German-themed tent stage there for the weekend. That will be open from Friday evening on 9/18/2015, through closing 11:00 p.m. on Saturday, 9/19/2015.
It's your pleasure.
I'd like to move that we table this, to look at it perhaps, I don't know if we'd look at it and leave, or review an ordinance, or in another committee about, we have a little time on this, about maybe something could be done to consider, you know, comments brought up about blocking it, you know.
Is that your motion to table?
Yeah.
Second, Ed.
You have a motion by, is that your motion?
Yes, that was my motion to table it, and.
To postpone.
To postpone it until we can maybe sit down and figure out an alternative, or something that, you know, because I, what Mr. Conkright brought up is something I certainly never thought of, and might be something we'd want to look at, or, you know, and we might not want to look at that, but let's just take a little time on it.
Okay, we have a motion to postpone into the next council meeting, second by Alderman White. Discussion, yes.
Could the Oktoberfest provide some kind of map of layout of, of what the use is of North and South Illinois, as well as East, West, Main, each direction, booth space, not, not particularly the name of each booth, just, we plan on having eight booths on this block, we plan on having two stages on this block, some kind of rough, so we can say, you know, where you're laying out what, especially to this extended section that we're talking about.
Yes, sir.
Well, I think we can do that, and I think, I don't think the motion is out of order. We do have time for this.
guarantee you, it's not easy out there. We need every dollar we can get, and this hurts us. And I'm not talking about just this event, I'm talking about all events. We will not be back.
Sir, sir, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I appreciate what you say and why you're saying that. That's really important. My one question that I would want to pose, that I would be curious about, if we didn't promote downtown?
No.
Okay, or do you know where we're going with this?
I want to clear, maybe I didn't make myself clear. What I meant to say and what I think I said was, I don't think we should ever give, the fence that we have, I don't think we should give additional park, additional streets blocked for additional. Anyone that's got going, and as far as I'm concerned, new events, once it's got to close all the streets, I'm against it. What we got going, yeah, we support it. Sure, we support it. But does it hurt? Yeah. Have I, you know, I suggested we had one time, we changed the date, and I got crucified. And I will be crucified on this, too. They said, I can see it coming already.
Yeah, I was just wondering if, in the long run, it's a positive thing
No.
to get the promotion for the downtown businesses by having people downtown who wouldn't normally be there.
To answer the question, once again, like, let's take Chili Cookoff, for example. I'm not saying a thing about abolishing or cutting back on the space. I'm saying I don't think they should give additional space. Any event we got going, I don't think we want to give additional space. If it wants their grandfathered in, great. I'm not going to, we have to be civic-minded also. But the fact is, when the streets are blocked off and the lots are full from these events, it hurts our business. Our business, we depend on traffic, and if we don't get traffic, we don't get business. And when the people are coming down there to doing these party events, for the most part, they're not shopping. But do we have to be civic-minded and support what we're doing? Yes. But do we have to enlarge on it? As far as I'm concerned, no.
All right. I was just curious, as far as the cost-benefit analysis for a long-term situation with having people down there where you may be hurt for one or two days if it doesn't help business over time by having people there.
You know, on the sidewalks, just to give an example, you know, I haven't complained about Art on the Square, other than the fact that they closed the streets off too soon. Why would we have to close them off at 9:00 a.m. on Thursday when they don't start setting up? It's ridiculous. Why we have to keep Main Street closed off on Sunday? Ridiculous. It hurts business.
Okay.
I can tell you for a fact, and I can prove it to you, this last year, we had a 16.2 loss. I figure four days, because when they start closing streets down the day before, Thursday, that's considered a day hurting business. My four days, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, we're down 16.2. That hurts.
Yeah, but it just makes me wonder about your gains through the rest of the year by having an increase in traffic.
You know, there's absolutely no question that when people come down and see and walk through there, some of those people will come back at a later date, and that's something you can, no way of measuring. But one way we can measure is what it does to business on the days when they have them.
Right.
We didn't give you exact figures, and it hurts.
Being a citizen myself, I kind of appreciate the viability and the vibrance of downtown and having those festivals. Not talking as a city council member, but as a resident here, I feel those things draw me downtown much more often, and not just on those days, but on other days also.
You know, let me give you another example.
No, I don't.
They do draw traffic.
Excuse me, excuse me. We need to bring this to a close. I mean, we've got more time.
Well, he asked me the question, I was waiting to sit down.
I understand, but I'm just saying we need to bring this to a close.
Can I give you one more quick example while I sit down? When we have a run, and the run completely, sorry, excuse me, completely circles downtown, so that at some point in time, every street has got to be blocked off, and it's in the paper the day before, there are going to be street closures till at least mid-morning, you think, and people, so they don't come until noon. They think you're not, you're going to have the traffic problem. Any other questions?
Yes, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? If not, I'll close public anticipation. Next item under presentation, recognition, and appointments, as the mayor does every, the beginning of every month, he recognizes the character word, which is fairness, means playing by the rules, being open-minded, and not taking advantage. So we encourage all of us that these are more than just words, they're actions that we need to live in our everyday life, so encourage everyone to be a part of that. Next, the approval of minutes. You received a minutes from the special council meeting.
I move the minutes to be approved, just presented.
You have a motion by Alderman Kinsella, second by?
I'd like to make a second with a correction.
Okay, let's get the second first, okay.
Second.
Okay.
I'm trying to find it on my thing, but where it says, I talked to Dallas about this before the meeting, where it says, "I spoke before we took the vote on the Shrine Tiff," the end of what I said was not included about finding it in their heart to do what's right for the future of Belleville. I'd like to have that added, and he said they would.
That'd be fun.
Sir, I have a correction to you. Under discussion on my comments, it says, "I feared it would metabolize." Metabolize? I said cannibalize.
Gotcha.
I'll accept that.
Accept those. Okay, any other additions or corrections? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Claims, payrolls, and dispersments. It's your pleasure.
I move we accept and file the claims, payrolls, and dispersments as given to us.
The second? Alderman Bittner, any discussions? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Tyler.
Aye.
Randall.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Galet, I'm sorry, Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have oral reports from the standing committees. The first one is motions from the Fire and Police Commission. Do you have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Richard Wangland from captain to battalion chief effective one hour, June 2nd, 2015.
Is there any reason why we couldn't do all these at once?
Can we do them as a group?
Please do.
Okay.
Motion to approve Kurt Logue, if I mess up these names, I'm sorry, from engineer to captain, effective the same date. Motion to approve Michael Minor from firefighter to engineer, same effective date, and motion to approve Raymond Winchester from firefighter to engineer, effective 01 hours, June 2nd, 2015.
Got a motion, do you have a second? Second by? Joe Hazel?
That's good.
Okay. Any other comments? Roll call.
Hazel.
Aye.
Kinsella.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Bittner.
Aye.
Tyler.
Epstein.
Randall.
Aye.
Ovian.
Aye.
Sillsby.
Aye.
Anthony.
Aye.
Diddleman.
Aye.
Cybert.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Elmore.
Aye.
Wiggington.
Aye.
Musgrove.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item?
Can we please have the promoters stand and be recognized?
Sure, if they are with us this evening, would you be standing? Congratulations. Next, under motions from the administration, we need a motion to deny solicitors' license requests from ARM Security.
So moved, Your Honor.
Motion by Alderman Randall, second by Alderman Kinsella. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Next will be communications.
12A, 5K Run Walk to honor Dr. Neil Shaw, founder of St. Elizabeth's Hospital Cardiac Cath Lab. Communication from the Dr. Neil Shaw Memorial requesting to hold a 5K Run Walk on September 19th, 2015, starting at 8:00 a.m., also requesting barricades and no parking signs.
Do I have a motion? Motion? Do you want them all?
Except for the one about the Oktoberfest. Can we do that one separately?
Does that agree with both everyone?
Yeah.
Okay.
12B, Midtown Merchants. Communication from Midtown Merchants requesting permission for the merchants to hold a sidewalk sale on Friday, June 5th through Sunday, June 7th, 2015 during daylight hours. 12C, Belleville Main Street. Communication from Belleville Main Street requesting to expand hours of brewing queue include Friday, June 5th, 2015. The craft beer walk would be moved to Friday, June 5th, 2015, from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. and will only include the area of East Main Street from the square to Charles Street. They are also requesting permission for a sidewalk sale on Main Street during the hours of the brewing queue on Saturday, June 6th, from 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. 12D, Tour de Belleville. Requesting, the Belleville Park and Rec Department requesting to hold the annual bike ride on Friday, July 1st, 2015, starting at 8:30 a.m. at Union United Methodist Church throughout a designated route throughout the city. Also requesting barricades and police coverage and street closures.
Could we stop just a moment on that? That should be July 10th, and it should be 8:30 p.m. Sorry, thanks, Dallas.
Yeah, that would make sense, wouldn't it? That'd bring us to Oktoberfest, so if you'd like for me to continue on?
Yes.
12F, the Circle of Remembrance. Communication from Minister Frank Wagner requesting use of the small community park on the corner of East Main and North Church. The theme for this community outreach will be the Circle of Remembrance. This event is free to the public. The dates would be June 14th, 2015, June 28th, 2015, and July 19th, 2015. Also, July 26th, 2015, August 16th, 2015, and August 23rd, 2015. The time for each of these dates will be from 2:00 p.m. until 4:00 p.m. The community outreach will be a musical with 15 to 20 people, and remain open for anyone from the public to stop by and enjoy the performance at no charge. 12G, no parking out on Oven Street. Communication from Jason Bus, owner of Kyle's Antiques in downtown Belleville and owner of Kyle's Estate Sales, is hosting an estate sale at 2:15 Oven Street on Friday and Saturday, June 12th and 13th from 9:00 to 3:00. In the past, he has hosted sales on the street and is too tight to have parking on both sides of the street. Mr. Bus is requesting the city to post no parking signs on the opposite side, east side of the street, from 7:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. for Friday and Saturday, June 12th and 13th. He needs the street open for loading of items from the home. Okay. 12H, Belleville East High School, 7th Annual Lancer Rule for Cherry 5K Run Walk, 11/7/15. Communication from Belleville East High School requesting to hold their 7th Annual Lancer Run. They're requesting assistance from the police department to control the flow of traffic at the intersections of Orchard Drive and Route 161 and at Orchard Drive and West Boulevard from 8:45 until roughly 9:45 a.m.
We have a motion by Alderman Cybert, second by Alderman Schmidt, to approve the communications as read. Yes, sir.
Question, please. Is the first item you mentioned, the Dr. Shaw, St. Elizabeth's Run, is this the first time for this event? Second?
Second.
Obviously, the police department's already reviewed this route.
Yes, I believe they all do.
Okay, thank you, as I'll add.
Any other questions? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
12V, Oktoberfest. Communication from Belleville Oktoberfest requesting extending the festival an additional block, High Street to Jackson Street. Their plan is to place a German-themed tent stage there for the weekend. It will be open from Friday evening on 9/18/2015 through closing at 11:00 p.m. on Saturday, 9/19/2015.
It's your pleasure.
I'd like to move that we table this, to look at it perhaps, I don't know if we'd look at it and review it in ordinance or in another committee, but we have a little time on this, about maybe something could be done to consider, you know, comments brought up about blocking it, you know.
Is that your motion to table?
Yeah.
You have a motion by, is that your motion?
Yes, that was my motion to table.
To postpone.
To postpone it until we can maybe sit down and figure out an alternative or something that, you know, because I, what Mr. Conkright brought up is something I certainly never thought of, and might be something we want to look at, or, you know, and we might not want to look at that, but let's just take a little time on it.
Okay, we have a motion to postpone into the next council meeting, second by Alderman White. Discussion, yes.
Could the Oktoberfest provide some kind of map of layout of what the use is of North and South Illinois, as well as East, West, Main, each direction, booth space, not particularly the name of each booth, just, we plan on having eight booths on this block, we plan on having two stages on this block, some kind of rough, so we can say, you know, where you're laying out what? Especially to this extended section that we're talking about.
Yes, sir.
Well, I think we can do that, and I think, I don't think the motion is out of order. We do have time for this. I think that we can, as we go through a little bit more time, we can have a schedule of what we plan on the second stage and what we would have down East Main Street for the one block.
Okay.
I don't think that's out of line.
Okay.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
But, you know, we, we're, last year was such a great success, and I can tell Alderman Elmore that we will have a car show on Saturday from the square down to Third Street and North and South First and North and South Second.
But do you have anything down, how far do we go on?
We go down to Washington Street on Illinois Street and down to Eighth Street on the North and South.
And of course, that's a state closure, so we have to, it's a little more hassle getting there.
That's a state, yeah, and we
They're closed anyway.
are out of there at midnight on Saturday night.
But I mean, it would be nice if we could sit down and maybe figure something out that would meet their needs and meet their
Who is we and when? Should we sit down?
I'm not clear which committee this would be.
The mayor's office will get in touch.
The mayor's office will figure out which committee we should sit down with.
Yeah, we usually, we usually deal with him, and he communicates with you people or whoever.
Okay, Alderman White.
Maybe we can look at that, and you know, the points about it affecting businesses, that's something I think we all want to consider, too.
I understand.
But we want the Oktoberfest, so.
I also think there's a lot of people that come downtown and wander around and do wander into business.
Sure, but he has numbers showing he wants business, so I'd like to maybe consider that, and we have time.
All right, Alderman White?
Thank you, Chairman. I would also like whoever's, the mayor's office, to address the concerns, the businesses that would be affected, especially toward the more eastern end of Main Street. I've had several of them contact me with potential things that will disrupt their business, and some of them were quite specific, so I wish that they would be included in that.
I understand, and we, but we, I would tell you also that we do have some of the businesses on East Main Street that will be participating with booths hitting out Oktoberfest.
I understand that. I don't want to disturb businesses, but I want everybody to come to a mutual agreement, at least to have these people have their say in making the decision. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to postpone until the next council meeting to allow time for, to work with the Oktoberfest committee and the city about providing more information about extension. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. There are no petitions, we have one resolution. Can I have a motion to read by title only?
I move we read by title only. Resolution 3233.
Do I have a second?